Okay.
I won't do that.
It's time to start the meeting.
You don't.
Chris, I'll hold this up in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay. It is two past six o'clock. And it is October the 5th, 2023. And this is a meeting of the Warwick County Council. Y'all please rise for a moment of silence and remember Charlie Christmas family. And thank you. Rob, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the brother and sister, one nation, united, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Okay, for the record, Chris West Stein's attending by FaceTime.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Chris.
Hey. Is this okay just sitting on the table up here? Okay. Okay, roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris West Stein.
Here.
Yep, we heard you. Thank you. I had to pause because I'm writing everything down. Okay, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, September 7th, 2023. I read them and didn't find anything.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call. Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris West Stein.
Yes.
I'm a creature of habit. Circuit court business. The per diem petted jury, $5,000. Can I identify yourself?
I'm Brandy Backer, bailiff, court administrator for circuit court.
Council, have any questions?
Just so y'all know, Judge Granger did call today and wasn't going to be able to make it. And he did explain that this $5,000 only covers the current, the jury trial they just completed, and it will not get them through the end of the year. So he will be back next month asking for enough to try to estimate through the end of the year.
Does he know how much that's going to be?
We have a, right now our balance is $1,0345. We have an outstanding claim that we need to pay for $5,000. So that will pretty much take it all. And then we have a five-day civil trial at the end of this month. And I don't know the cost of that yet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is motion by Ron and second by Rick. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. I wrote it down, too.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris West Stein.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is all seven of us. And the previous vote was 7-0 to, I forgot about Chris online. Assessor business, reassessment contractual services, $45,000.
Sarah did email today and I left a note for you, but she had a family emergency come up. She wasn't going to be able to make it. But basically, this is, you had shorted the contractual services line because they weren't going to have enough money in their budget because they had a large amount of money that was invested and couldn't be brought to the fund. And now we have moved some of what's invested back into the fund and there is enough money for the contract.
So do we need to pass this then?
Yes.
Okay. Any comment from anybody?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Motion by Rick.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris West Stein.
Yes.
That's all seven of 7-0. Okay, sheriff's business, inmate meals, $48,000. Of course, steak and lobster.
I don't know if that it will cover that, so.
Just kidding.
Any questions on that?
No.
Do they have to eat?
Unfortunately.
I'm kidding. $8,000.
Well, I, you know, I did do an estimate. You, you budgeted $125,000. They are spending approximately $13,000 to $15,000 a month. And they, you know, they have like $28,000 left. I mean, this should get them through the end of the year, but whatever's left does just roll back into.
Roll back into the check.
So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rick, second by Ted. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris West Stein.
Yes.
Thank you.
7-0, okay. Auditor business. The, it says the ARPA local, whatever that is.
It's supposed to say fiscal.
Furniture.
I feel like facial recognition.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Whoa.
$22,250. Cume Capital Development for the furniture chairs, $18,546. And then that's an ORE from the auditor, for the auditor's budget furniture auditor chair, $18,456.
Or you could do half and half. There's several options there. I was just trying to advertise appropriately.
The 22-5.
Yes, Debbie Bennett Steersman, I'm the county grants administrator. At the commissioners meeting on September 25th, the commissioners voted to approve the request by the auditor of $22,250 for the purchase of 15 workstations at the price of $1,250 each, making a total of $18,750. A discount of $100 per station would be taken for a total discount of $1,500. The cost for installation and labor for all stations is $5,000. The stations are slightly used, but just like new. The price for the same station new would be $5,000 each. The stations include tower, mobile pads, panels, power, glass, countertops, and support. The stations are two feet additional workspace and include a locker for coats and other personal items. The commissioners voted 3-0 to take this fund, the money from the ARPA interest account, and that's why we're doing the additional appropriation.
So this is not just a chair?
This isn't the chairs. These are the cubicles.
Yes, the first appropriation.
The first item, the $22,250.
Is for the project.
That's what I was describing to you. For workstations.
Is the total $40,000 then?
No, I'm just coming for the ARPA request.
Okay.
The auditor will speak to the other. It is county ARPA interest.
You could just break it down, a motion on just the ARPA appropriation first, if you would like to, and then address the chairs separately.
And the chairs could be divided up, $9,000 each.
Right.
Nine-five each. At your pleasure, gentlemen.
Well, we can discuss them all upfront and then we can smooth them out if we want to. I think.
Let's talk.
Might as well just do that instead of.
Let's talk about the ARPA. Cubicles. Chris, you have anything to say about the ARPA? Cubicles?
No, I don't, I don't, I think that comes out of the interest. This way I understood, is it not?
Correct. It's coming out of the interest account and it'll be transferred then to the fund for the purchase of the cubicles.
And I'm going to comment and confirm this with Debbie earlier. Excuse me, that the interest account is for the county money only, not the competitive grant side of the ARPA money. There are two separate sides. And there's, that money is not in an interest-bearing account.
And only the county ARPA can earn interest.
Money is, so it's used for county projects only. Because that was my concern about that.
Was this bid it out or did they just come to you with this price?
I had reached out to Corporate Design and they had these stations available. The cost, the, the, the cost would have been $75,000. I personally went and looked at them. They're in great shape. So they, they gave us a, a discount of $100 per station. The cost was over $5,000 if they were bought new. So we're getting the, the stations at $11.50 versus $5,000.
Each. If it might not, does this, does this, now would that include the installation and everything like that?
Yes. Yes, it does. And unfortunately, I don't have any fees that I can utilize. I don't have a perpetuation fund. We're, we're very limited in my office as to what we can contribute, which is basically almost nothing.
We're going to talk about the others and do it all.
Let's, well, I think probably we ought to take a vote on them separately. Is that what everybody's wishes would be?
No, I don't mind voting on them separately, but I thought maybe we could get all the information together for.
Right. Yeah, on all three.
Yeah.
On the chairs, now you want to talk about the chairs, too. Okay. Anybody here?
The same story on the chairs. You just went out and chopped your chairs?
Yeah, I, I've done my research. The chairs that I'm proposing to ask for your permission to purchase are Herman Miller chairs. They're, they come with a 12-year warranty. That warranty covers everything. If a cylinder starts to leak, we don't have to ship that chair. They have a service person that actually comes onsite and fixes it. If we have a caster that breaks, so for 12 years, those chairs are covered. I know the, the initial cost is a little shocking, but when you break it down, I'm asking for $1,100 per person for my staff.
And that was how many chairs?
16.
16.
The importance of service after the sale to me is, is paramount. If I buy a $500 chair and it has a two-year warranty, am I going to be back asking for another $500 in three or five years where this is going to give us 12 years of usage? It's for three shifts. So it's designed for someone to be sitting and using it for three shifts a day.
As I can here, Mike, I personally apologize. I didn't mean to stop being involved here. Past couple of weeks and, and it's been hectic for me, but, but I apologize for that. And I did ask for and I received a copy of the warranty on the chairs because I heard the 12-year warranty mentioned several times. Anyway, one of the first things I noticed was that on the invoice, it only called for a 12-month warranty. So when we looked into that, it turned out the 12-month warranty is provided by the vendor who we would be purchasing from and the 12-year warranty from the manufacturer.
That is correct.
Okay, and then, so when I read through the 12-year warranty, for, it covered for the first year, it covered electronics in the chair. First one to three years carried various items, covered various items. And the 12-year period was on the fabric.
No.
So I was, I was really impressed with the warranty and as big a 12-year warranty. I mean, it seemed like a fine warranty. But, and then it had a clause that I would really confuse me, which it said, under exclusions, it said anything caused by normal wear and tear. So that really got kind of threw me for a loop. I didn't really know what that meant. But I just feel like it seems like an awful lot of money for, for chairs, you know, at $1,100 apiece. Watching you guys on, on the YouTube here, it looks like the chairs you're in are pretty nice. I doubt if they were that much. Surely not. But I, that's just my thoughts and apologize for doing this on the phone here, Mike.
No, that's fine.
That's my thoughts on it. I, I do like that you got, you know, the, the cubicle.
I, I think one of the big advantages to these chairs are they're a one-size-fits-all with adjustability. The front side of the chair is a waterfall. It does not have a hard rim. It's not cushions that would be warm. It's breathable fabric. And the, the availability to adjust it to each person is what appealed me to it because not everybody's body makeup is the same. So this chair adapts to the individual. And, and the 12-year warranty, it, it does cover everything.
Well, I, the warranty they sent to me clearly did not.
I have a copy.
Is there a representative there?
No, there's not.
You have a copy of that, where, where it says?
I do have a copy of the warranty.
You all got the copy that he has, right, in his hand?
Yes, should.
Yes.
And, and I, I understand the, the bottom dollar is, is what we have to look at. But when you, when you look at the ergonomics of, for the, the staff, I, I think $1,000 for 12-year warranty shares is a good deal in my opinion.
Is, is Sherry Severs in the room?
Yes.
Yes.
Sherry, did, weren't you copied on that email with the warranties?
Yeah, no, my, my understanding is the warranty covers everything, Chris.
Okay. I, uh, that's not how I interpreted it, but I knew you were copied on that email with me, so I, I would get your interpretation as well, so. I'll be, that's fine. I, I respect your opinion and everything. And you may be right, you know. I did, if you manage, I can pull it all up.
Yeah, just a second here. It, it states it's backed by 12 years, three-shift warranty, except as limited or described below. And so on parts and components, it shows 10 years. It says on elec, the electronic ballast is five years.
I think that breaks down each individual chair that they offer.
Oh, okay, that's.
Herman Miller chair is covered for 12 years.
Okay.
There's a breakdown of different elements.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying.
That's the same.
That's the same as that. Chris, the only thing, the only thing I'm showing is, is what Mike's got here, which is their warranty is a promise, 12 years, three shifts, labor included. Our warranty covers everything, including electrical components, casters, cylinders, tilts, and all moving mechanisms.
Are, are you reading the actual warranty itself?
I'm reading the Herman Miller U.S. and Canada warranty. Yeah, and the other warranty that breaks down 10, 8, 5, 3, 2, and 1, that is on Herman Miller brand products, including Geiger products, Eames soft pad. So it's not just Herman Miller, it's other products as well.
Correct. Maybe that's the ones I was reading from there.
Mm-hmm.
The numbers you said sound right.
Right. Yeah, that, that's not specifically this chair.
This, this chair is not included on the, the 5, 10, 1, 3. Those are all like, where it says three years, it's Herman Miller Collection Outdoor Products. Two-year is the Logic Micro Tower, on and on. None, nowhere in the breakdown of the lesser years does it include the chair that we're looking at.
Well, then, I'll, I'll go with you on that. I'll stay directed on the warranty. And I'll stick with that. I still think it's too much money for that chair.
So Mike, are your current cubicles, are they, like, I mean, are they in a state of disarray, I'm assuming, or?
Yeah, they're, I'm going to be honest with you. I was also advocating for the rest of the offices because all the cubicles are original to the building. We have sheet metal screws that are holding panels together. We have exposed wire underneath the feeding, the, the feet area where the, the staff sits. They're 25, however old the, the courthouse is.
They're original to the building.
Yeah. And then the clerk's office had helped purchase new cubicles for their office, but like I said, they have funds and fees that they can pull from. I wished I had the recorder's money. I mean, they have a perpetuation fund that they can pull from, but I, I don't, I don't have that.
Yeah, Sherry Severs, acquisition administrator. Mike's cubicles, when we did the carpet project and they had, the furniture people had to disassemble and then move them, they were in as bad a shape as the clerk's office was. They were very poor. Mike even looked at trying to paint the cloths and some things like that, but the moisture from the paint, it, it had like OSB underneath the cloth, would have swollen the cloth. And again, the, the units are, they normally retail for $5,000 apiece. But because they agreed to give a government discount, significant government discount, there was, according to Indiana Code, we didn't have to bid it out. These cubicles actually came out of Center Point. They used them for.
I believe.
Yeah. Very short time, and then they had replaced all of their furniture, so they are in excellent condition.
So we weren't required to bid these out because they were under that minimum dollar amount?
We were not required to bid them out because there was a significant government discount involved. And because of that, you're not required to bid them out. And, and they're, they're not brand-new furniture. They are gently used.
The commis, excuse me, Debbie Bennett Steersman, the commissioners did fund half of the furniture for the clerk's office. So that's their reasoning in splitting out the two in this case. They gave the clerk, I think it was 29, 530, and the clerk matched with that much out of their own funds. But as Mike said, he didn't have any, so the commissioners decided to at least buy the cubicles and then pass the chairs on to, for Mike to try to find the funding.
The clerk has a perpetuation fund also.
Yeah.
More questions? Be happy to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA fund of the $22,250.
I'll second.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ron and I'll give it to Chris. Any discussion on that? That's the $22,250 from the ARPA fund for furniture for the auditor's office. It's cubicles. Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Nay.
Brad Overton.
Yes.
Richard Reed.
No.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris West Stein.
Yes.
Guess that vote is five to zero.
Five to two.
Five to two. And the two are Ted Metzger and Rick Reed. Okay, now the rest of it, the chairs. You could divide from Cume Cap, the $9,250 basically. And then the other part from the, to give to the associate, to additional appropriation to the auditor's office of $9,250. Or you can do all 18, 546 from Cume Cap. Or all 18, 546 from the additional appropriation to the auditor. Cume Cap money is, money is already there, correct, but we do have to appropriate it. Further discussion?
I'm going to make a motion to do the $18,546 from the Cume Cap fund. Thinking if the, we don't ask usually department heads to tell us how to run their departments and so forth. If he feels this is necessary and the money's there, then I feel that we should appropriate it.
Motion by Ron. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'm going to second it so we can bring it up for a vote. Okay, any further discussion? And that's just on, it's taking out of Cume Cap. Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Nay.
Brad Overton.
No.
Richard Reed.
Oh.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris West Stein.
Is this vote 3-3 right now?
Yes, it is.
Further, I, I do need to make a comment. And I would say that Ron Bacon, a simple sentence, when he said that letting our department heads run their departments, I'd like to go with that and I agree. And our department heads should run his department. Yes.
Okay, so that is four to three. In favor of taking it out of Cume Cap. And the, the three were Ted Metzger, Brad Overton, and Rick Reed. That's all done. Don't need the next one down there for the auditor.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do I have to close our meeting and open for public here?
Yes.
Okay.
And before you close, maybe you should just go ahead and do the handbook.
Okay.
Since that was the last thing on there, I should have just done this a little bit.
Okay, the handbook, policy reimbursements, transfers, or corrections. All items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted under one motion. Additional appropriation from the Health Department, Administrator, $2,267, and Data Manager, $884. I assume that's a sellback of vacation.
Yes.
And then, Salary Ordinance Handbook, Health Department, two-week PTO, paid time off. That is $2,266.70. And then, one-week PTO, Data Manager, $883.54. That's a salary ordinance to the above additional appropriation. The handbook, Counsel, Other Services, $2,693. Administrator, $2,693.
Transfer, it should say transfer.
It does, transfer, I'm sorry. And then, Salary Ordinance, Counsel, two-week paid time off. Administrator, $2,692.80. So, eight As additional, eight Bs a salary ordinance, eight Cs a transfer, and eight Ds a salary ordinance.
And just so you know, we're gonna have several of these next meeting.
So, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Opposed by Brad, seconded by Ted. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
So, I can close the meeting and go back. Order the meeting closed, and I'll order the public... Okay, I was gonna do that in the very end, when we have our other council business.
Well, if you're closing the meeting, then the other council business should occur now.
Yeah, oh, it should occur now?
Yes.
Any other council business?
No.
Okay, so I need to call for a motion to close the meeting?
Yes.
Motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Rick. Close the meeting. Close regular meeting.
We're doing a public hearing.
Do we need to vote?
Yes, we need to vote, all those roll call.
Gotcha.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Yes.
Ted Metzger? Yes.
Aye. Sorry.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
Okay, so the meeting is closed, regular meeting. Now, I call to order the public hearing.
And Chris, because this hearing involves establishing or renewing a tax, you cannot participate in this public hearing. You can attend, you can stay on FaceTime, you just can't participate in discussion, motion, or voting.
Okay.
You can't break ties.
Yeah, okay, so no, that won't call, yeah, obviously, we won't vote.
Correct.
You wanna go back to YouTube, then? Okay, so you can hang up, then, thanks. This down. Okay, the public hearing is open. First up is number six, a resolution. Resolution of the Warwick County Council, establishing a fund for proceeds to be received from the sale of real estate to the Warwick County, Indiana Building Corporation, and making an appropriation from such fund. This is resolution number...
09.
09. Any comment from the public? This is basically, they take over the current jail building, is that correct? The building corporation takes it over and pays us rent on it. Yeah, you better explain that, because...
Good evening, Brad Bingham with Barnes &amp; Thorberg. So, we're serving as bond counsel on the jail project, and really, what you described, Greg, is accurate. So, the new facility will not be completed for, let's say, two years. There's a period that's gonna be constructed, and you can't pay rent until the asset's constructed and available. Well, bondholders, they want interest payments every six months. And so, the only way to really do that is to have the building corporation acquire an existing asset that you rent from them during the construction period. So, that's really all we're doing here. It's why the existing jail's involved in the discussion, which is allowable in Indian law. But in order for the building corporation to acquire that property, they have to pay the county no less than the average of the two appraisals. And so, that's been done, and the average of the two is $5,830,000. So, when we close on the bonds, that amount of bond proceeds is being moved over from the building corporation side of the ledger to the county side of the ledger. Doesn't change the cost of the project, doesn't change anything. It just divides where the money is gonna be residing. Most of it will sit with the bond trustee, this amount will come over to the county. That's why you need to create a separate fund into which to receive this and to appropriate those dollars back into the project. Can't be used for something else, because you need it for construction costs. But it's, it's just, the only reason we're doing this is to avoid having to capitalize interest during the construction period. We wanna be able to pay interest as it accrues every six months.
Brad, let me, and this is just a hypothetical question, but if this whole project just stops for a while, how does that affect things?
So, the way the lease is written is, bonds close, lease is effective, building corporation acquires the existing jail, and it owns the high-rock property upon which the new jail will be constructed. The lease says they will continue to lease you the asset until the new project is completed. Once substantial completion is achieved on the new project, the existing jail drops out the lease, and it comes back to the county. That's the way to think about it. But if there were some delays in the construction, so now, say, it takes three years, well, then, you'll just lease the existing jail for three years. It is a concern from a bondholder standpoint, because you can't make full lease renewal payments. In other words, starting to amortize principal and pay interest until the project's completed. So, we always look at the estimated construction period, which I think is 22 months. And then, we say, well, we don't want that first lease renewal payment to be like, until maybe 30 months. We had a cushion there, we call it construction period risk, if there's delays, et cetera. This is why, though, we don't sell bonds, we don't start all this until construction bids are received, it's within budget, and you've given the notice to proceed. That risk is always there, there's no way around that, but that's, there are ways to mitigate that risk.
And so, that land has been finalized and been purchased?
That is close. I don't know, I don't know exact date yet, but it is very close that that will happen, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the council? I've already asked for public comment, I think. So, it would be proper to have a motion.
What was the resolution number, six, seven?
Nine.
Nine.
Pause.
Cliff, do I need to introduce this, or just make a motion to...
And so, are you on, right now, the ordinance? Number six, a resolution, a resolution number six, okay. So, a motion to introduce.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution number nine.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is that long?
Yeah.
2023-9. Have a motion and second, any discussions? We don't need roll call this time, do we?
Correct, you do not.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Five in opposed, one Rick Reed. Okay. Do I need to close and open another public hearing, or just keep it open?
Are we, Brad, are we voting on the resolution today? Yeah, that we're.
Yeah.
So, we need a vote to pass the resolution, then.
Okay, this is 7A?
No.
No, it's 6A.
Still six.
Okay.
Now, you're voting to pass.
Right, now, a vote to pass.
And it didn't need a 7-0 to do that?
Well, this is a resolution, so no. On the ordinance, you need unanimous consent, which of the present members, and because, again, Chris is not present for this meeting, we'll get to that when we get to the ordinance.
Okay. So, it's time for the second reading, then.
Well, this is just the... The next step would be a motion to pass the resolution 2023-09.
A motion to pass the resolution 2023-09.
And if you don't mind, sorry, Greg, if you could read the title into the record, just so we have it, please.
Resolution of the Warwick County Council, establishing a fund for proceeds to be received from the sale of real estate to the Warwick County, Indiana Building Corporation, making an appropriation from such fund. So, I need the second reading. Is there a motion?
There's a motion, the motion would be to pass the resolution.
To pass the resolution, okay.
I'll make a motion to pass the 2023-09 resolution. Does that correctly?
Yes.
Motion by Rob, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ron, second it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, in opposed, one Rick Reed. Next is the public hearing of the GO bond.
I'm not sure if it's necessary, but to be safe, let's close that public hearing and open the new public hearing for this second bond.
So, should I do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close that existing public meeting, or...
The public hearing on the jail bond.
A public hearing on the jail bond.
Motion by Brad to close, or second?
I'll second.
Taking the rock. Rob.
Rob.
I'm sorry. We have three Robs in our church, and I'm, I do stuff there, too. Okay, let's close this. Any discussion, all those in favor? Six to one to close the public hearing.
Six to one?
It's five to one.
Five to one, sorry, five to one. Now, I'd like to open the public hearing for the GO bond. I read it now, is that correct?
Yes.
This would be an ordinance. It's an ordinance of the Warwick County Council, as fiscal body of Warwick County, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the county for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the cost of certain capital improvements at various county facilities, and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and on account of the issuance of the bonds, and approving certain matters related thereto. It's open for a public hearing to discuss this. We'll need a motion, I'm just asking.
We need to open it.
Should I make the motion first, or the public hearing, public comment first?
Well, you can open up for a whole comment, which you've done.
Okay.
And then, now, we need a motion, and whether we'll need a second meeting is dependent upon if that motion passes by unanimous consent of the six present.
And this bond is animal control building, $2 million. I'm sure these are estimates, new storage building on Third Street, half a million dollars. Health Department remodel, $400,000. Large Judicial Center storage area, $250,000. Fourth Street storage building, $150,000, and excess proceeds, $470,000. Total's $3,994, not, $3,994,727. There's an underwriter's discount included in that, and allowance for bond insurance costs and contingencies. Seeing no public comment, I'm looking for a motion. Unless somebody wants to discuss it ahead of time.
I'll make a motion to deny.
A motion by Ted to deny, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick Reed.
Cliff, did we even need that? Because if you, if it didn't...
You need it, but a motion's been made.
Okay.
If nobody made a motion, it would just go away, right?
That's correct.
Did I withdraw my motion?
I'll second.
That's the only motion I can make.
Any questions on this, or any discussion? So, I'll call for a motion, first time. Call for a motion the second time. Call for a motion the third time. Hearing no motion, this is basically denied. Is this the same one?
Yes.
Seven B, do we need to do this?
No, there's no...
No.
No. No appropriation to be done.
Then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Brad made the motion, and a second by Rick.
We're done.
Yeah. Okay. Lost a lot of sleep over this meeting.